Go ahead and start.
Tonight, I'm gonna start the meeting, but I'm gonna have Corey do most of the talking tonight. I'm gonna try to save my voice. I'll chime in on different issues.
City Council and Stewart, Vanessa, utilities joint meeting, council members, attend the agenda Monday, June 12, two thousand twenty-three, five o'clock P M. Roll call, Morgan?
Here.
Cabal? Renzo? Dolly?
Here.
Kurt Patrick?
Here.
Go ahead and chairman later to vote for the meeting.
Call meeting to order, uh, joint meeting of the, uh, Stewart City Council and Stewart Utilities Board. Call Brian?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
And Shirley. And I'm here. What, uh? Kristen?
Five one five? Eight six five? Fifty eight ten?
What is that?
No, it isn't. Just got something.
Please leave your message for five one five eight.
Hello?
Hi, Christine Dash.
Hi, I'm sorry. I was under the impression that these meetings were supposed to start at six.
So the joint meeting starts at five.
Well, well, I think we're gonna have to change that because most people can't get back from Des Moines until at least five thirty.
Okay.
But I'm here on the phone, so we're good.
All right. We just talked to the meeting and Mike is here. Okay. So we'll go ahead and, uh, change item on the agenda is number two. Chair Jones.
So I, I was asked to, um, compile information by a board member, Belvin, and that's what's at your chair with the paperclip material that's, that's included. There are five different categories of items and it's work for both the city and utilities, so me to be neutral on that, on the question that's before the board and the council. Uh, I'm happy to go through this. I don't know if Brian wants to introduce a little bit to start off or how you wanna begin.
I guess I'd like to see, this is again my input here. We just got this at the end of last week. Um, there's still a lot of questions that I've got with it and follow-up information we need. So is there a possibility rather than tearing into this tonight, um, having somebody else from the council also work with myself and Chip and put together some, I guess, summary points to this rather than getting lost in all this information? It's just not all complete to be able to present. That's just, again, I mean, it was, we come to meetings and we don't know, uh, what we don't know, right? So like, there being the question I know nothing about, so I ask information on that. Um, utilities provide services to the city. I don't understand all that, so I tried to put an outline together that would try to educate myself and anybody else that cared. And so the new council member, new utility board member comes on, they could just hand this to that person and say, you wanna rate it? You can. If you don't, who cares? But at least they've got it. So, um, anyway, and then another main focus was to try to say, uh, wobbles, these wobble phases, how long is our payback? What is the cost to us? And, um, can we continue to do that? Should we continue to do that? And I don't think we have all of those things ironed out in this package. It's time for it to shine. That's just my opinion, so.
Is there somebody from the council that wants to work with Chip and Brian on this?
I wouldn't mind doing that.
Okay.
So we table that.
I guess.
You have anything to add, Chip?
I, it's, it's a lot of data. Uh, it's a lot.
Looking at.
It's, um, I can take two minutes to give an overview if you want, or I can wait on that until later. It's, oh, it's.
Why don't you give them a overview?
So, so the, I'll just, um, there, there are page numbers at the bottom right of each page. So going to page three of twenty-four, it's kind of the first page of content. This is a good introductory piece because it summarizes, and I believe this is accurate. This is a lot of memory that had to shake out the cobwebs on. So the first phase, phase two, phase three, phase four, wobble subdivision, I'm calling that phase four. And then I can, you can see what, how it's listed out in terms of the water service territory, the electric service territory, participation by, by the board, if any, and then the, any payment terms from the, the utility to the cities. Uh, does that look accurate, at least in terms of, I think most particularly the electric service territory? Does that look right to you, Pat?
Yep.
Okay. So that's, that's kind of the background, what's led us to now. Page four of twenty-four, that's a page that Sarah had put together that outlines the water revenue by subdivision. Is it, is the purpose of that page? The profits in the column on the right side, and then the profit over various points in time were shown at the bottom of the page. Page five of twenty-four.
Can I interject on this real quick? Just on this page in particular, if you look at overall phase three, it says, uh, the profits thirty-nine twenty-six. If you go over to the prior page under phase three, it shows the contribution for both electric and water, but it's not showing the contribution for the revenue from the electric on the following page, so those don't tie. There's just some of these other components to this to have a comparison we need to get. There's also two other things in this one that I think we should have, which would be if the utilities not borrow this money, we should have interest costs size into that profit number, and then also a three percenters, whatever the adjustment would be for rate increase in anticipation over that time period.
To you, it's laid out. Sarah had sent phase three, all things, the electric revenue. I, I've been a little consumed by the sound of information, uh, so I missed including that, so I'll just be.
Not everybody's full. It's just a, it's a lot of information.
Page five, page five is the break cost. You've gotten this information from Forrest. This is just intended to be a summary. This breaks out a contemplated change order in row two. So that's the purpose in that. The water loop is a portion of that three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar number in row one. The water loop cost is roughly eighty-nine thousand five hundred. Again, you've gotten all this from Forrest already. Uh, the next page, page six, are various potential approaches to how the utilities may or may not participate. I think those are pretty straightforward. The contemplated long-term debt, I think, would be over twenty years, most likely. That won't be decided until twenty twenty-six, so it's just an estimate at this point, but that might be the road of focus on in each of these, I think, these scenarios. And really what's remaining is material that we've seen already from Forrest. It's just in one package, um, to be, to be summarized. I'll, I'll skip ahead to row, excuse me, page seventeen is, um, is the kind of outline of the payback information from the wind turbine. The detail is on page eighteen, the following page. Page nineteen is the outline for city services, uh, city, between city and utilities. That detail backed up on page twenty and twenty-one. So there's kind of a cover page you see each section. Four is economic development projects that the city's been involved with. The revenue that from a utility standpoint is on page twenty-three. Uh, page five is the outline, cover page for the utility cash flow, and that is what's the, it's a new item for today, but it's, that's what the loop base handout on the, kind of the larger eleven by seventeen tabloid paper. So that's, that's sort of that line of what's included, and, uh, I think, uh, we, you may look for this information to be refined as we look at it to a future meeting, so. Thank you.
Go ahead, Chip.
I have a question. Um, would, would you be opposed to, if I joined you and Brian and Chip? Would I like to go?
No, I, I just, like, like Brian kind of mentioned, you know, jumping onto this new and stuff. Curious, I guess.
How about any utility numbers?
It's been a timing. I would be opposed to joining also.
Sounds great. I think that'd be good, so. Okay, I appreciate it. I just wanna know. That'd be all right.
So we just, we just gonna table this to the next joint?
There's no, not really any. This is if we can contribute on that water project is, has been. There's a lot of discussions on things that, I don't know, a lot, the whole wind turbine thing. I don't know anything about it. So it's just meant to try to identify those and the, you know, provides an history to that.
Sure.
We write a check. So we write a check to the city over here for utilities, uh, or, excuse me, for the wind turbine. And so, I mean, I don't know anything about that.
I don't either.
The structure, how long the agreement lasts, the balance and, you know, repair costs and that type of stuff. So that's just, I don't know, one of the.
When does the decision need to be made for the percentage of contribution for the water?
You have some time. I'd say make it in the next few months if you could. Uh, the city's financing is not contemplated to include any revenue from the utilities for the water, uh, cost of the, of phase four. So that's not been considered. It's not been assumed. It's, it's zero. So, uh, if there's a contribution from the utilities, it's assumed to come over time. Uh, and that percentage, of course, is up to the utility board and the council to discuss and hash out, and so.
Good.
Okay. We'll go to next item. Number three.
I guess, thanks from everybody. So do you wanna set a time where we would all get back together to cover this? In a two-month period or what? Is kind of a timeframe to, uh, it seems like it's a struggle to get joint meetings, so.
Right.
I'd probably say so.
Check and find a time.
Sixty days and that, you know?
That, that's perfectly fine.
I'll work through the mayor to figure out when that is. Is that all right?
After number three.
Soccer complex improvements.
Wobble is number three.
Oh.
One with this city, also this quarter of the special. Uh, we had utility meetings and, uh, discussed our issues, discussed the motivation, and we decided to do in the joint uh, in the council, but the whole feel like you wanna make that decision tonight, that's fine. Like Chip said, we can wait for a couple of months and can do the separate meetings.
We got that again.
So after the utility goal, could it slide?
How do you feel about that?
I agree with you. Yeah, but I feel what Brian's trying to look into is gonna help us paint a better picture and really give us what we can or can't contribute in the end.
Okay. We'll table that number three. Okay, now go to number four.
Uh, number four, soccer complex and improvements. And Carl Chevrolet proposed irrigation meter.
Okay, the cultural layer was discussed at the board meeting also. Uh, we came to the conclusion that the public director and water superintendent equals the weight that we have. We don't want to have that. We don't want irrigation. We just, uh, Shirley's not here, but Shirley wanted to be formally approved on at a council meeting and both meeting at the joint meeting. So we'd like to make a motion to approve that irrigation meter, close the culture.
Um, I guess my two cents on that would be, you know, if we, we do that for one, we're gonna have to do it for, for all. Cause, um, I've been asked before why we don't have irrigation meters to some of the folks. And then they're paying the sewer on top of that.
If we go for one, we're gonna have to probably do it for pools too, you know, people for one of their pools and irrigation as it were too.
Yeah.
And I know that was correctly discussed at a council meeting one time.
Which I, I don't mind, but I think it, I think it goes deeper than just Carl Chevrolet asking for that, which I don't have a problem with. I'm just saying. Do we open it up for everybody?
Yeah, so is the school that has one now?
They do, yes.
And so then this would be commercial or not commercial, but this one would be commercial, the other one would be, I mean, so what kind of label on that? I mean, will you open it up? Totally agree. Residential too, or what?
Yeah.
Or what's it?
It's a joint meeting.
Yeah, no, I'm.
When Jim and Ben discussed it, they were very clear that they were comfortable with it for commercial properties only, not residential properties. Just because you're getting into, the payoff is not enough, and they have to keep track of all of those backflow vendors that are in our. Testing is turned in for those, so by limiting it to commercial customers, they have more control over that. They can go, they can inspect it. They can make sure they're comfortable with the setup. They're both in agreement on that.
But I understand that, but I still don't think it's fair. For commercial to residential.
Sorry.
So if, if something is, and Pat might jump in here too. So it's a device, it's almost like a check valve, so water doesn't get sucked back into.
If there's chemical or something, yeah, if there's chemicals sucked back in, you don't wanna get into the water system in your business house, whatever.
So do we have a comparison of other utilities, what they do, or, or cities on how they manage that issue?
Well, we can always.
Is it?
I'm just asking if you ask.
I know the bigger cities, they, they will do for properties, they, they will allow you to have an irrigation meter, and it's just a separate meter that you just don't.
Fill and swan.
Yeah, or anything like that. Water in your lawn, washing your vehicle, whatever.
They can.
Yeah, that's not going down the sewer system. But saying that, don't wanna shoot this city in the foot too, cause now that will take away some revenue from the sewer. You see what I'm saying? It's kind of a catch twenty-two thing.
Well, and it's a second meter that everybody's got.
They work for the job, so.
Case by case, or?
I mean, is it case by case, or is it?
We take it case by case. It's true.
Yeah, same, is that right?
Yeah, the only thing that from the city's perspective is they don't want it to be going to the senators. So they mean, it's going to the storm, so it's okay, but they don't want to take it to the senators. So that's what the concern from the public. How to kind of stand by every stream and find out.
Right, I just didn't know. So if, or if Earl and Delo have, you know, two separate meters for people to do this, or whether they know of them, then we should, I don't know.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's true to talk a lot of it here.
Yeah.
Personally, it's a lot.
And we can put it on next month's agenda to revisit, but right now, I mean, we could focus on Carl Chevrolet, what they're wanting to do, I guess. That's my opinion.
Yeah, cultural layer. Public work director and water superintendent, he goes, okay, it's true.
Okay, yeah.
Now, my question is, on the residential side, I mean, I've heard, I haven't looked into it, but aren't there portable meters that you can hook up? Like, hey, I need a fill-up pool, and I'm gonna be using a large water amount of water in a short period of time, you know, if something like that, the residential was allowed. I mean, could that be something to be looked at as like the portable meters versus if versus, you know, hard install meters for that temporary sort of scenarios, you know, watering the new addition lawn or fill-up pool or something along those lines, so.
Pat, what kind of expenses do utilities have?
Uh, it's gonna be pretty big, actually, if we're gonna, if we're gonna provide meters or if we're gonna make people pay for their meters. Because everybody's gonna have to have a second meter if they wanna meter for this. Whereas it's, and we'll make a little revenue off of it only because we're gonna have a meter charge on that second meter. The water's gonna get used, whether it was three or two meter. That's how I look at it. We're basically gonna get a meter charge off of this.
And the backflow, cause you have to.
And that's up to the, yeah. Whoever the customer is, has to put in a backflow, a backflow, but it, and that's where the headache comes in. Making sure everybody does it. They have to be checked every year by a professional to make sure they're working and to keep track of all that paperwork. That, that's where the headache comes in.
And make sure that nobody.
We got no foot down there that, with some of the backflows in, uh, like the motels and some of the bigger customers.
And to make sure nobody's cheating the system too.
Right.
Yeah.
So, Mike, how, if I want the water number, do I have the backflow on the system right now? Do you think so? Okay, so why would we do it from? I guess, I do, I see, I don't know anything about this, so that's why I'm asking.
The amount of water that they're talking about using for this.
Carl, I guess Carl's talking residential currently, you know?
Well, I throw a hose in my pool, I fill up my pool, I leave the hose in there, back pressure occurs, it syphons that water back out into the city's water supply. Who's to say, you know, my pool is full of algae, or I gotta throw it in the pond for whatever reason, I mean, who knows what that, it ended up back syphoning up into the system? That's why you need that backflow to better, is that, is for those purposes.
So I could do that now too?
Theoretically, yes.
So then we should have that flow now? So. It's, it's all possible to have it right now.
I would guess if the council wants to go ahead and approve Carl now with the commercial site and then do more studying what other towns doing and the cost. The north side town, it's gonna be a lot of water use trying to recede going, that's just.
That's good. So you need a backflow? No, that's not.
We need a motion for city ending.
Okay.
I'll make a motion from the utility side to approve the, for Carl right away, so.
I'll do from the city side.
It can be one motion.
Oh, is it?
I'll second.
One by, okay, second by means. Okay.
How do you vote? Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yep.
Renzo?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
How do you vote? Brian?
Yes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Shirley's not here, and I vote aye.
Any other issues related to city and utility combined?
The soccer complex. Now, Brian had asked for quotes, what it would cost to get our lighting over at the soccer complex, and the city's got designated a hundred fifty thousand dollars total for a lot of improvements over there. And utilities had come up with a spreadsheet, it's twelve thousand one hundred and ten thirty. My question is, yes, we should pay for possibly all the electrical components and stuff, but I just want a question about the labor.
What I'd ask for that, it was just meant to, to show that utilities was contributing to this project, even though, you know, the city was carrying most of the load, that utilities was contributing, uh, to it as well, because I can't remember who rattled off a bunch of things. I know I was on the phone that night, but there were several, uh, a lot of material neighbor that was going into it, so that was the purpose of.
Cause right now, we've got four poles from our old housing development. We've got eight arms hooked on, and then we'll have two lights on each pole, but it's a matter of getting the wire and and this, this doesn't include the cement for the bases, that I didn't know the utilities were pretty willing to donate their labor from the two employees in the box truck. Board members, how do you feel about that? We're looking at how much share, about thirty-two hundred dollars?
I'd support that. I mean, times for the cost. Yeah, I mean, it's not something, if you look at the, the share of, we're sticking to the water and electric expense side of things. Try to make that preferable.
Need a motion for?
We got a motion.
Okay, does, uh, somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make it.
Oh, sorry. Uh, how do you vote? Brian? Uh, Craig?
Aye.
Kim?
Yes.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I got one other question before we adjourn. We've got Avery Marks watering all the new trees at the soccer complex. I asked, where do you get your money from, from the city, but I found out Sarah paid twenty dollars worth of quarters to start off with. A question, she says the paperwork's a piasco, trying to figure out that Avery's going on vacation for a few weeks. I'm gonna have to take over watering it. I, I wanted to know if I could just get quarters from the city to go up here and get the water. But she said the paperwork, it's hard to figure out how to do that. So I, I didn't know if there's any way, she says, if I went up at a certain time, the utility worker could possibly fix it so I can get the water without paying for it, but a lot of times it's.
Hey, you know what? A baggy full of quarters that somebody left there about two years ago, and it's still sitting right off the water. How about that?
That sounds good, because it takes seven quarters to three hundred gallon. I think Avery's doing every other day. How we ran to the restaurant.
Give you a zip line, baggy full of quarters.
Probably go around and fight nothing, probably. Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, you'd be all right. Any signals?
Council and utility board would like to discuss or talk about.
I, I think I might add, well, the folks from Carl Chevrolet are here, uh, as, something that we found out through the process of the bond issue for housing phase four. Carl Chevrolet has a hundred and fourteen employees at Stewart.
Wow.
They were expected to have something in the range of forty-five to fifty of a hundred and fourteen, ninety-three are full-time. And, uh, I think everyone knows they're, you're contemplating building a, a new building here, so. Uh, I think that was an excellent piece of news that we found out through the process of, of the bond issue. Uh, Tony Mills told me about it, and that was a great piece of news.
It was good.
I think a lot of them live here in town too. There's some, or at least in the area.
It's about three, four, so the people live within the short area, some of the, that, some of the people that I would say are more qualified for a position like a higher up one that's take time and years of experience, that come from a distance, but they're training the people underneath them that do live around here, so. And I'm Deb's the one from around here that runs our quick move and stuff.
Ashley lives around here too, don't you?
Yeah, Ashley and Blake, and they all kind of live in this area, so. And, uh, you know, so.
And they eat at our deli every day, so.
Is the new building tied in with the auction facility or just?
Kind of both. We're out, around room for internal, uh, Carl cares.
Out, run room for internal, uh, Carl cares what be home, working on our used cars that come in. So we're gonna move all those guys to that building and then share it with the auction, so.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
Now?
You need to adjourn?
Need to adjourn at 6:00.
Thank you.
Jingles of love.
Thank you.